And welcome to the February 14th, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. Are there any extra chairs? Y'all want to come sit down, Stuart? You sure? I know why you're there. You want to... I want to thank all of y'all for coming out for Valentine's night and spending Valentine's, especially for my Mayor Earl Roberts. I mean, boy, Earl, we're glad to see you for Valentine's. You tell your wife you love her?[46.78][46.78](Laughter) I'm not... You know, I'm not lying for you, Mayor. No. I'm glad to see you over here instead of breaking equipment over there at the Institute. I'll tell you what. Anyhow, we're glad you're all here. Tonight, our prayer and our pledge are going to be led by Edith Zavala. Would y'all please stand?
Let us pray. Lord eternal God, as we begin our meeting and do so with the awareness that without your presence here at the center of our meeting and also within our lives, our work would be empty, null and void of existence. Fill us with your wisdom and guidance. Gift us with humility. Allow your spirit to bleed through in every decision made here today and help us to accomplish the task set before us. Thank you for your guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Now if you'll please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Earl, tell me again what you want me to say? Do have some candy over there for you, though. Okay. Okay. First item, citizen comments. Let's see what we have here. Okay, then we got a... Okay. All right, we've got a couple of speaker cards to start with on the proclamation item. Vic Verma, did you want to say something about the proclamation?
We're going to come up as a group.
Oh, okay, okay. But, and I had Art Clendenin. We're not going to do that... Okay, just a second. We're going to do the proclamation after the citizen comment. I just didn't know if you wanted to say something about the...
Yes, and Terry Wynn will be coming up.
Okay, well, I'll... We'll do the proclamation here in a couple minutes, okay?
All right.
All righty. Okay, so the next item I have is Brandon Johnson.
Greetings.
Greetings.
How's everyone?
All right.
You all right, John? You're not? Oh, well, I hope you get all right. Good, good. How you doing, Sidney?
I'm good, fine.
Good, good.
He's hungry for that Valentine's.
I want your undivided attention while you're clipping fingernails. Okay, well, use that tablet that you got.
That's kind of fancy.
Come on, y'all burning this minute. Come on.
All right. Well, I don't need that long. I'm going to cut... I'm just going to be short and sweet. I'm here opposing the filing fee that you're going to be bringing up during the election item. I've got 13 points, and I'm going to read them down, and I hope that you six council people will just please listen and use your heart as I explain these 13. One, filing fees discriminate against lower economic residents. It only saves $6,200 over a 10-year period. The impact that filing fees would have is negligible, only around .03% of the city budget. The goal of the filing fees appears to discourage candidates from running for office. Filing fees appear to prevent actual elections, which is the antithesis to democracy. Filing fees are not the norm in city elections in East Texas. We want to know who is being discouraged from being a potential candidate. And historical point, John Gerald ran an election against Carlisle and Henderson back 20, 30 years ago. Had Gerald not been in that election, Mitch Henderson would not have won in the runoff. Note, how can we save money on an election that costs about the same with two or more candidates anyway? The only fiscal option to save money during an election is to not have bonds, because those elections with bonds, which is like the one that we're talking about adding a bond to, are the only ones that cost the extra amount or absorb an amount of money. Where is the trend of people running for elections without intent to hold office? And who says candidates must have signs, be it forms, or even be mentally stable to run to office or for office? I'm pretty sure some people think I might be, and some of you might even be as well. How does anyone definitively know that the last mayoral challenger to their current incumbent has actually moved away from Longview? Because I heard that mentioned before, too. And it is impossible, a figure I heard of $20,000, to save $20,000 when the only election to bust $23,000 was a bond election, and it was before we went to the electronic machines so we don't have any printing costs. The only thing we have is to place things in papers and pay the county are the major fees that we incur. So I hope you take all those points in mind later on when you guys decide of whether or not you're going to add this to the bond or to the election ballot come May.
Thank you, sir. You did good, man. All right. Okay, so that's all the speaker cards I have. I have one, but it's for a zoning item. So the next item will be the presentation. We'll do the proclamation of the 100 Years of the Texas Section of the American Society of Civil Engineering. And I've got Terry Wynn, Art Clendenin, Vic Verma, and Gerald Morris. Okay. How you doing?
Just great.
Good. I'm going to do this proclamation. If you've got something you want to say, then we'll jump right into that. Okay. Dumbo off my head up here. This is a proclamation commemorating the Texas Section of the American Society of Civil Engineers Centennial Year 2013. The organization, now known as the Texas Section of the American Society of Civil Engineers, or A.S.C.E., was started in July of 1913 by a group of seven engineers after a Texas Good Roads meeting in Corpus Christi. Over the last 100 years, Texas civil engineers have taken a quiet, undeveloped state and transformed it into an economic and technological powerhouse for the entire nation. Over 10,000 civil engineers addressed the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing infrastructure that will take our country through the 21st century. Civil engineering is vital for the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for all Texans by providing roads and bridges, safe driving water... Safe driving water. Did y'all mess that up, Marion? How about safe drinking water? Now, make sure you can look at that. Okay. We got... Anyway, engineers, safe drinking water. They've driving water, okay. Stable structures, storm and wastewater systems, and sustainable infrastructure. During 2013, A.S.C.E. Texas Section will celebrate the past 100 years of professional service to the citizens of Texas while preparing for the next 100 years. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Longview, do hereby proclaim 2013 as Civil Engineers Centennial Year in Longview. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we... I do take blame for the typographic error. Yeah, yeah, I'll take it. Yeah, it was me. I am a past president of the Texas Section of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and so I'm just delighted to be here representing the Texas Section today and delighted that these gentlemen joined me to honor the Texas Section. We also, the fellows, have passed out to you the report card on Texas infrastructure that's been prepared by the American Society of Civil Engineers and a little booklet there for your use as a souvenir for the celebration. So the Texas Section has evaluated the infrastructure in the state of Texas through a very rigorous process and has issued this report card. So we're delighted to be here presenting that to you. And that's all I had to say, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being in Longview.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Okay. Thanks. Give this back. Okay, then the next item B is the presentation regarding online community engagement tool Longview Listens. This is going to be Ms. Kelly Hall.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you for letting me be here.
Same to you.
We have some exciting things. We just want to take a moment of your time to begin a discussion about, and that is LongviewTexasListens.com. The Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, as you know, has been working on a strategic direction to help shape the future of Longview, and several different approaches have been taken and are being considered to help us be able to attain, retain, and attract employees and to create an atmosphere where businesses can grow and prosper. As you know, several of you have been involved in either our annual visits to our annual inner-city visits, best practices of growing markets, understanding gap identification, and now we're going to bring a new platform to the table to help increase the two-way conversation. I'm going to show you a quick video.
Welcome to Longview Texas Listens.
This is a virtual town hall where you can interact with your neighbors on your schedule in the comfort and privacy of your own home.
What would you do to make Longview a better place to live, to work, and to play?
Don't wait for the next election. Engage your neighbors and community leaders every day, 24/7.
The conversation allows us to hear your concerns and suggestions in real time.
What other ideas are out there among the larger diverse cross-section of residents?
Explore the site. See what others are saying. Support those ideas you like and submit your own.
Now you have an outlet for your voice from home, at work, wherever you have access to the internet.
What is your way to promote idea sharing on significant developments in the community?
Join the two-way conversation.
Engaging with your government is now only a click away.
Sign up today and be a part of the 21st century tool for steering toward a better tomorrow.
Mayor, as you know, sometimes it's hard engaging those meaningful conversations. Oftentimes, town hall meetings are not always filled with those individuals who come forward with those positive solutions, creative thinking, innovation, but oftentimes it turns into something a little bit messy. Messy's okay, but it's nice to have that meaningful creative dialogue with citizens from across the community. So how does that take place? By having a website, LongviewTexasListens.com, anyone, any day of the week, 24/7, can go online and become part of a conversation. So how does it work? Whether you are on Facebook, whether you are on LinkedIn, Google, or you just want to use your email, you can sign up to participate in the conversation. Once you sign up, this is how a conversation may go. For example, what is the one thing you most admire about a community other than your own? And then when you click on that item, you may see that 30 people since yesterday have already looked at this, five people have shared it, and perhaps even someone has already commented. So someone said, hey, what would I like to see in Longview, Texas? Here's one of the ideas that was brought forward to us yesterday. Pretty interesting concept. Not only was it brought forward, someone has already responded on that comment to take that idea to the next level. That's what engagement is all about, creating the opportunity to let everyone in Longview, Texas, have a voice, be a part of a two-way conversation. We know that it works. We know that people want to be part of the solution and feel like they're a part of our community. It empowers, it's transparent, it affirms, it's convenient, it's actionable. Then people often ask, well, who's listening? Well, guess who's listening? Our city manager, Susan Gill with Lead Co. and myself. And we'll be taking the information collected back to our leadership, you, our boards, our team leaders, our staff, to take the conversation to the next level. And so tonight, I just want to say thank you for letting me have the opportunity for introducing this platform, to help get it into the community so that we can start making a difference and shaping the future for Longview. Questions?
Kelly, I want to thank you and the chamber for another great asset to help promote Longview and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your Valentine's evening.
Yeah, we'll see you later, I can see. Wait a minute. Paul, you leaving, too? You know, Valentine more important than City Council meeting? I don't get that. Okay. All right. Okay, next items are discussion items. Discuss recommendations from the Animal Shelter Task Force and the city's options relating to an animal shelter. Council, the last meeting we reviewed, or we actually had a work session, then we reviewed the recommendations of our Animal Shelter Task Force. At that time, we discussed or instructed staff to put together an RFP or RFQ to come back to us with information so that we could put together this package to go out to some different engineering slash architectural slash construction management people to give us an idea of what it would cost to do that, to help us to come to terms with what types of dollars we're talking. We also heard from Alicia Nolte, one of our members, regarding speaking with Mike Arms out of San Diego, and also Mr. Trimble from Dallas, that might be able to give us some information as we work towards putting together this RFQ, which I want to say to Alicia, I spoke to both of them this last week, got some really good information, and both being very willing to help us, even to the point that when we get the RFP ready, they'll be happy to look at it based on what they did in their communities to build an animal shelter free of charge. So that was some good information, Alicia, and I appreciate it. But I think that we're to the point now where I think we're going to have a discussion tonight regarding participation by the Humane Society, again, as a potential 501 to operate as compared to what's been recommended by the Task Force to set up a new 501-3C. So I'm going to ask that... That seems to be the crutch of this and why this is back here on the agenda based on what we talked last time, so I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody want to... Mr. Manley?
I've got a few things I'd like to say, so I appreciate your patience as I work through these points. As I watch the irresponsible activity of our elected officials in Washington and to a lesser degree in Austin, we seem to have departed from the age-old practice of facing the reality of a situation. It may feel... Make someone feel good to wax poetically about the plight a particular group finds themselves in and how we, as a people, acting through our government with taxpayer money need to rush to their aid. The reality is that we cannot possibly do everything. At the city level, we have to balance our budget. We have to save money in our reserve for the future hard times that inevitably come, no matter how good things appear at this moment. We have a fiduciary responsibility as well as an emotional and a humane one. It's in this vein that I wish to say a few things about the animal shelter and remembering that the government exists and serves by the consent of the people. Let me start with saying I love animals. I got Max the Mud at the house. We've had for about three years. We've had three or four cats over the course of the last dozen years we've lived here in Longview that we've adopted from the Humane Society and the cat that adopted us three years ago when he walked into our yard and our heart. I can't imagine my life without animals. I also feel painted into a corner as a councilman. A lot's been said and done over the past two years, some I agreed with, some I did not. A lot was said by many people, both in this chamber and through other venues, that have been disingenuous, hard-hearted, and at times downright hateful. I've had to bite my tongue while I listen to some of the many irresponsible comments made here in our council, but at the same time, I have empathy and common cause with many who have spoken honestly and earnestly on behalf of animals here at the People's Podium in the city council chambers. The Humane Society has been the victim of character assassination, innuendo, unproven claims of malfeasance, and financial mismanagement. I want to also add that they're the only entity or group in this area that's ever operated an animal shelter. They did our collective dirty work for years without the assistance of anyone other than our money. What went on there, we didn't want to know. Along come some well-meaning people who were appalled by what they saw: high euthanasia rates, unclean facilities, and an uncooperative board who honestly, I must say, have contributed mightily to the toxic communication and trust impasse that led the mayor to taking the steps he's taken to create the task force. But I have some new information that I think is valuable. Euthanasia rates at this animal shelter have fallen from 75% to 25%. That very closely approaches a no-kill shelter, since many animals can't be saved at all because of disease, or age, or injury. Adoptions are at an all-time high. Personnel changes and leadership changes have brought a new sense of pride to the animal shelter, and through the help of Dr. Betsy Griffin, they are beginning their trap, neuter, and release program. A lot of this new information, and again, since they are the only group that have ever run a shelter, I think we need to bring the Humane Society back into the mix. Contrary to comments made in this chamber, the society did not say they wanted out. If you read their letter to the city closely, they stated they could not continue to function in the financial situation they found themselves at that time. In other words, they could not make ends meet. Had we engaged with them, in my opinion, and helped them understand what their income needed to be, something the Animal Shelter Task Force spoke to, I think we would be in a very different situation right now. In other words, unlike our federal government, this really was an income problem, not a spending problem. I'm convinced that if we and other cities will negotiate in good faith to compensate the Humane Society at a per-animal rate that makes sense, again, use the Task Force numbers, not only will we achieve the standards most of us desire, but they can do so in such a way that would negate any need for the city to spend $2 million, which is being tossed around right now, for our share to build a shelter, and more importantly, avoid the daily operation of an animal shelter, which we do not operate today, at a cost of more than half a million dollars a year. I'd much rather see that money spent on the sidewalks, like we built around Foster School, or economic development along I-20 to bring the hotels and restaurants that we're talking about possibly bringing, or up in my district, the George Ritchie Road Extension, which I think will be, if not the most valuable, one of the most valuable corridors ever put forth, built in this city over the course of the next few decades. I believe we can live up to the expectations of our citizens and our animals and not spend millions of dollars to build and untold millions in the future to operate an animal shelter. Secondly, and more briefly, I've tried to engage with citizens about this issue over the past few months. I've encountered a small, yet very vocal, strong animal rights group that says, we need to do whatever it takes to take care of our animals. The people that I've been able to engage at length about have come to the realization that they've been taken in by the months of negative press about the animal shelter. And when I explain to them the financial aspects of this, as I just have here tonight, most seem to agree that slowing down and looking at all options is a good idea. The majority of citizens I've talked to have been like me. They want to do the right thing, but want to look for more tempered options than the ones put forth right now. They, too, would like to see our taxes put to use in other areas if there really are other options for the shelter. So in closing, I honestly don't know how the majority of our citizens feel, and now I would like to ask the council to consider requesting a survey of some sort, be initiated to ask that very thing of our citizens. I recognize that would need to be controlled in order to avoid people stuffing the ballot box, so to speak, but I want more information. Thank you for your attention and your patience.
Okay, thank you. Richard? Okay, anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, Garrett.
On the animal shelter, I'm not sure if you know how much that's going to actually cost the city per year. It's $1 million per year to maintain a shelter, and that staffing, electricity, and all the other items that go along with a shelter. Right now, we pay probably $250,000 to maintain a shelter right now. My question is, what services are we going to have to cut to maintain a shelter? Are we going to cut our sanitation? We're going to have to cut some of our public work? Because we can't... I mean, our tax base is actually not really growing a whole lot at this point. Neither is our sales tax base. So we're going to have to consider what's the option? Do we cut services? Do we cut people? What do we want to do on this particular shelter? A million dollars is a lot of money, and as times are right now, times are still difficult at this point, and we're still not fully out of this recession yet. Longview's still on the growing stage, but we're not there yet. So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
What else? Mr. Frost?
I, too. Like animals, we've got a cat that rode home with us on the frame of the car. Still got it. I kind of agree with part of what Richard said, and if we're going to do something like this, I would like to see a nonprofit without animal control do operate a animal shelter. To me, that's one that makes sense, people have got expertise and not have to have control officers, which would be a nightmare with the different entities we have involved and different ordinances. So I would think if we're going to do this, the operation part of it would have to be, to me, should be operated by a nonprofit, such as the Humane Society. Now then, as far as building it, that's another question. We just have to determine who's going to pay what and how we're going to do it, because I do think we need another one. If we let the Humane Society... We've got to have a building. We've got to have better facilities. And the question to me is right now is, what are we... How are we going to pay for that? And who's going to pay for it? Now, that's what I think about.
Okay. Let me jump in, okay? I mean, and we'll come back and listen, but there's several things here. One, you know, the reason for the euthanization rate, and it's going to fluctuate, Richard. I mean, it's down, but go back historically and look at what it's at. And what the main thing with the Humane Society as far as the shelter is, can they afford to go build this new shelter? Okay? And I'm watching the executive or the interim director right here saying no. Okay? And that's where the task force, you know, went through three months of reviewing all the data and came up with, including members of the Humane Society that were on the task force, that setting up a new 501-3C operating board, which Mr. Frost is talking about, was the best direction to go and move forward there. Okay? You know, the thing, Garrett, about the operating cost, okay, is the reason that we instructed the city manager to put together an RFP so we can really get into that data and find it out. The numbers that you got, that we all got from staff, okay, are not exact science. We don't know what those true numbers are without getting that RFP to show us exactly what that is. Okay? The idea that if the Humane Society can't build a new facility, how much more can we afford to pay for what... I mean, the only city that ended up having to pay 25% more because of the Humane Society was Longview. And tell me why that's the case, because, you know, obviously, we have the most animals, but why didn't anybody else pay? Okay? So inside that board, okay, there still to this day, and one of the main points that people that will not commit to helping to fund is because some of the things that have taken place with that board. And as some of the board, you know, I'm going to say it, should really recognize that and step aside and give new people the opportunity, we might not be having this discussion. But I'll counter your comment, Mr. Manley, about the fact, Mr. Richard, about the fact that they did not give us a letter saying that they were not going to be collecting the animals in two years. That's exactly what it said. And what they... And what we said was, we're going to go out and we're going to review what our options are, and the first option was to go and find another animal shelter to take our animals, and we were turned down in every case. So my job as mayor here is, I don't really have a... We'll use a dog. I don't have a horse in this fight. But the reality is, the reality is, we've asked the task force to put together recommendations... recommendations, which they've done so, and I think what we need to do, and everybody has an opinion, you've had time to look at this, I think what we do is we put an action item on the next council meeting to vote up or down. Do we accept the resolution, which is gonna take the exact same work that Mr. Manley's talking about? Okay? There's a due diligence process that they laid out that we gotta go through. Okay? Do we accept that? Because what I don't want to do, I personally don't want to do, is to take our time and continue, because it's three years running plus now that these very passionate people have been outspoken, crying for help about what's going on over there, and if we're not gonna do anything, I want to let them know. I don't want to keep dragging them along and giving them false hope. So, I'm gonna ask staff that at the next meeting, we bring an action item, and the action item will be that we're gonna vote to accept that resolution and move forward or not. Okay? And again, that doesn't bind us to go and build this facility. We gotta do the due diligence process that's there. Okay? Ms. Casha.
Well, I think you covered most of what I wanted to say.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, what I wanted to address. I was going to suggest that maybe we do take a step back and take a little additional time to evaluate. I agreed with many of the points, uh, Mr. Manley made. My main concern, well, let me say this. We know we need to do something. We know that something absolutely has to be done. My only, the main concern that I have is in regard to, what are we going to do to get our revenue up to pay for it? And I know we've kinda tossed that around a few times, and so that's why I really would like to maybe take a step back and look at it just a little bit more. I don't know, you just ask staff to bring it before us at the next council meeting, but...
Just a second. By bringing this, I mean, we gotta decide if we're going forward or not.
Right.
Okay? Everything that you're asking for, Casha, you know, would be part of that due diligence, okay?
Right.
I mean, but we've gotta start with, which council asked for, was to get the expertise to help us develop this whole concept, okay? And then, there's questions that gotta be answered as we go through that, and that can cause us to go or not go. But at least to the public, we are using our fiduciary responsibility, and we're being very transparent about this, and it's out there, we're discussing it, and we either can do it or we can't. Okay? But we have other entities that are involved, you know, from a revenue standpoint, for a cost-sharing standpoint. That's got to be developed. So, I appreciate your thoughts, but that's all part of what the process has to be, in my opinion.
Haven't we, are we waiting on the numbers to come back, though, from the, exactly, the RFQ that we've already approved? Are we waiting on that before we proceed with taking the next step?
I'm gonna ask the city manager where we even are on that, because I think when this was asked to be brought back as a discussion item, I think everything stopped.
We're in staff in-house developing an RFQ that would be brought back to you for consideration.
Right.
That's in the development stage, to be brought at a future council meeting, and at that time, council would need to give us instructions, whether for the staff to interview design firms and bring you a finalist, or if you, council wants to interview them, or what, but we're planning to bring back the RFQ draft for you all to look at and to approve before we send that out.
And the reason I'm asking that is because I think we have a responsibility to make sure that all the citizens understand where we are in this process, as far as, like, if we're waiting on that, basically, if they, once the RFQ is complete, it comes back to us again, but that does not necessarily mean that we are about to build this facility.
That's exactly right.
Right? So, just to clarify. Thank you.
But it just, you know, like I said, I mean, everybody's got their opinions, and I've heard about, you know, exactly what Richard talked about, the Humane Society, and I know the reasoning why that the task force did not think that was the right or good idea, you know, in deference to, I'm sorry, but, you know, but we have to decide as a council. I mean, we asked and put these people through a process, I think it was a very good process. Some of you came to the meeting, it was open to all of you. Okay? Some of you did attend. Okay? So, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move forward, which doesn't commit us in it, just like what Casha's saying, but this isn't the time, I mean, let's don't keep going back and forth. Okay? If we're gonna accept the resolution, okay, to move forward, and my understanding was the next step was this RFQ, okay, then let's do that. Okay? If the majority of councils know they don't want to do that, then as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing else we can do outside of, I know Mr. Sims is saying, you take it to the voters. Okay? But it still has to be developed. What are you gonna take to the voters? You still have to put together a package for the voters to even realistically look at. So, any other questions, comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Make sure this is on. I think we've got into a very thorough discussion tonight, and I think it's good. It's good to get these things out. There's been a, uh, there's been an ongoing, over the years, conflict, whether or not the Humane Society was running a good shelter or was not, and I'm gonna give you a true story that happened to me several years back relating to the animal shelter. One year, I took a, we had a cat out the scrapyard, a wild cat, I mean, and it was, we tried to keep...
Was his name Sidney?
No, no. We tried to keep some kittens and cats around the scrapyard just to take care of the rodent population. Well, this one had got to the point where it had killed one cat, and so, we caught the animal, and I put it in a burlap sack, 'cause that was the only thing that we could put it in, and a loose burlap sack. I mean, loose, and actually, now, this gives it legitimacy. I had, that year, had some money, we were gonna make donations to different organizations, and I took the cat out there with another employee and I, in this burlap sack, and when I walked in, and they saw what I had done, you thought, you would've thought I had taken that cat and skinned it and stripped it alive. They told me how wrong I was, how stupid I was, how ridiculous I was, and how there was no crueler person in Longview than somebody that would put a cat in a burlap bag. Now, this is a true statement, I've got a witness. I had a $500 check in my pocket. I left the cat there, I said, "Thank you," I turned around, I walked outside, and I tore up the $500 check and walked off. Now, that's been several years back, and the Humane Society has gone through a lot of different management. Fortunately, right now, we have what I would say, and Ms. Stewart, probably the best manager that we've ever, that we've ever, it's kinda hard because this is a, that we've ever had. My wife has worked out there, we've taken some of the pets, and I have, I've had discussions previously, myself, with Kelly Highcamp on some of the problems she was having, I've had personal discussions with Susan Mazarakis on trying to, trying to get this worked out. And I think that the, I think we do have a termination date. I don't think there's any doubt that we've got to have a new facility. I just, I don't think there's any doubt that we can continue with the physical facility we have, and I think we need to look at that first, how we manage it, how we operate it, that's still an open-ended question. I think that's something we can all work on, we can come together on, and we can all come to a good relationship there. I think, really, what we're talking about tonight is, do we need a new physical facility? In my opinion, we do. We've just, that facility is dated, it's been there a long time. Ms. Stewart's doing a wonderful job with it right now. She has done something that we were not able to, or the staff and the previous personnel were not able to do. Now, she's just done a good job, but I think right now, the question is, pure and simple, do we need a new facility? And my vote is yes, we do need a new facility. How we operate that, I feel very confident and sure that we can come to an agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Okay, anything else?
Go ahead, Richard.
Couple things I want to bring back in focus here for everyone who's spoken. I had two points, and two points only. One is to bring the Humane Society back into this conversation, and secondly, get information from our citizens. Never once did I say, "Do nothing." That's a straw man, don't put it up there, that's not an option I'm proposing, to do nothing. In fact, it would've been easy for me to stand back and not say anything and allow the whole process to continue. I'm bringing this up because, in good conscience, for the reasons that I stated, I think we have other options. And whether you think fairly or not, the Humane Society has been tarnished. Some of it earned for crazy cat stories, some of it not. The point is, there's a new day going on down there, and there's a new director and a new board, or mostly new board, and there's new information coming from there. So I think rather than, as someone said, I think, a minute ago, about flip-flopping back and forth, no, this is, the task force brought us a recommendation, it was nothing more than that, a recommendation, and for that, I thank them for their time and effort. It is our job as elected officials here to decide, is that the best thing to do, or to look at other options, and I'm proposing other options. Not to do nothing, and not to focus exclusively on just building a building, but to bring the Humane Society back into the conversation, they want to be involved, and I think by doing that, we allow ourselves some time to make the best decision, the least costly decision, for example, because what I'm hearing from Ms. Russell is we can build a $2 million facility instead of a $4 million facility, and get it just, be just as effective as it would be with the other. So, that's my point. I want to make sure everybody understood, I want to bring the Humane Society back in for the reasons that I said, and I want more information from the citizens, and not to do nothing.
Okay. So, my proposal is that we put an action item on the next council meeting to adopt the recommendations or the resolution as presented by the task force. Okay? Which will help with, if we're all on the same board, and it's done, and it does everything that Richard's talked about, and also Casha, okay? Because we control that, the council controls that, but again, the do-nothing comment is, if you're not gonna, the Humane Society, I doubt wants this situation with the facility they're dealing with. They gotta have a new facility, and I agree with, and how we do that, okay? But what we have to do, in my opinion, is to move this process forward, that we've gotta get those recommendations, they were well-thought-out, and put those in place, and then we do our due diligence, okay? Which, again, we've discussed, would be to start with the RFQ. My thing about, you know, up or down, I don't want to drag this process out for another three years, okay? And I hate to use, Richard said the Washington thing, I don't want to kick the can anymore, we don't do that here. Okay? But if this council doesn't have, you know, the, you know, the good feeling, the wherewithal to work this thing through, to put together, and taking into consideration, everything has been talked about here, but we have to have data to be able to support the decisions we need to make, and so, we either on-page to adopt those recommendations and move the process forward down the road, and we're gonna answer all of these questions as we go. But, you know, whether, I mean, I just don't want to get bogged down with, you know, Humane Society running or not running, 'cause that opens up a whole different thing. How do they do that with the facility they have, because it's not big enough? Anyhow, we've done that. So, anyway, that's my recommendation. Let's move to discussion item B, which is the I-20 corridor task force, and I think we have a couple. You should have, you should have at your desk, and let me start off with saying, the membership, there's still, there's still some additional people that we're talking to as far as being part of this task force, okay? I've spoken with Kilgore, that, you know, Kilgore right now has about a $40,000 study going on, and their study on the I-20 corridor is primarily focused on 42 interchange. So I thought that it would, you know, be a good, maybe a good thing for them to partner with us, because there's data that they're gonna access through that study that might help us. I feel like they're a major player regionally on the I-20 corridor, so we have a name that we're working with right now, and I'll bring it back to council, there's a couple of other names that aren't, so, long story short, this isn't the final thing, but we will give it to you shortly, okay? And basically, the other thing is, we've got a charge, and really, truly, ladies and gentlemen, it's to broaden the tax base by enhancing the I-20 corridor through beautification, economic development, and redevelopment efforts. That would be the charge given to the task force. By the way, the task force is chaired by Dr. Dale Lunsford. Ms. Casha Williams is gonna be the liaison for the council on the project, and the staff liaison would be Mary Ann Miller. Okay? What are the objectives? The objectives, again, enhance, beautify entryways. We've heard a lot of different discussion about, you know, planting trees, and we've spent, over the years, some money on signage, et cetera, there, but really to delve into, what are some of the things we can do to make that, especially the Estes Parkway, the main entryway into the city, to enhance and beautify that? What are the economic development issues to create business opportunities? What are the things that we could do to enhance the creation of new businesses in and around that area? We hear about different brands, box stores that are talking about coming into that area. What are the things that we need to be doing to help make sure that happens? Okay? Next thing, attract a hotel, convention center facility. That's been discussed, whether it's using the old Holiday Inn, which was an article or a letter to the editor today about how bad it looks, and it absolutely looks horrible, but legally, our hands are tied because it's not considered an unsafe structure. I don't know how, but anyhow. But what are the things that we might, would be able to do through looking at all the different possibilities there? We've heard about a minor league baseball facility that might be interested in locating in that area, that may be currently, you know, in the metroplex area, that wants to leave the metroplex area, so that's, let's run that trap. Redevelopment of existing areas, there's lots of properties being developed right now, all the way out to, I guess, the Loop 281 East, you'll notice there's a bunch of warehousing and distribution facilities. So what are the other things we can do, as well as the last item? You know, industrial and commercial development, whether it's infrastructure, connectivity, what are the things that we might be able to do to invest in doing some of those things? Okay? So that's basically the charge and the objectives. We're gonna call our first meeting probably here the next few weeks to go over the charge and the objectives with everybody. In talking with Dr. Lunsford, we're probably talking about, you know, maybe a 90-day process. We'll talk about the meeting, meeting times, how often, et cetera. Staff will be supportive with the agenda to make sure we keep it, you know, moving in the right direction. These meetings will be posted, recommend that they post it, so the city attorney doesn't get nervous. That way, our council people can sit in and find out and hear what's going on firsthand. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you for your support of informing this task force. Everyone knows that this is something that's near and dear to me and the constituency that I represent, and also Gary Smith, but it looks that way, it appears that way on paper, but reality is that this is something that will benefit our entire community. So this can really be something awesome. I just come alive in talking about it, because we are committed to seeing some good things happen there. The potential is there. I believe that we will, you know, with what we have going as a city, we will probably explore some new public-private partnerships.
You sound like Mr. Willard in Death by Chocolate.
I stole your tag.
I hear you.
But we are really excited, and this is really going to be good. If you have ideas, we're not trying to, as the older people used to tell me, go all around Laurel's house. We are trying to come up with some succinct objectives the mayor has outlined, and we've been talking about these things, and really do some... been talking about these things, and really do some tangible things, it's positive, things for Interstate 20, so, I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm just, you know, I'm gung ho.
Good, good deal, okay, anything else? Okay, if not, we'll go to the consent agenda, council, any item on the consent agenda you'd like to consider separately, or anyone would like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Zoning items, A, B, and C have been withdrawn at this time, so we'll go to item D, consider application, Z-1301.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Willard, the applicant, Mr. Bowles, is requesting to rezone approximately 12.29 acres of land on Highway 31, and here's a map, this is in the industrial district out there, from agriculture to heavy industrial, as you remember, a few years ago, we annexed this area, once it's annexed, it's given a designation of agriculture until a more permanent zoning district can be established, based on the appropriate use, this is consistent with the future land use map for this area, Planning and Zoning Commission and staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Let's see, this item does require a public hearing, public hearing is now open, I do not have any speaker cards, with the exception of the landowner, would you all like to speak to this matter, are you here for questions? There for questions, okay, anybody else here that would like to speak to this item, that maybe didn't fill out a speaker card? If not, public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Election items, item A is a presentation of a petition for local option election, authorize a legal sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption, only within the city of Longview, Shelley Ballinger.
Good evening, on November 13th, 2012, Ms. Kimberly Fish, representing Longview United for Growth Committee, a special purpose political action committee, brought in an application to have an issue be set on the ballot, for against the legal sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption only, the signatures on the application were verified, and a petition was issued, the petition was turned in on January 7th, 2013, and the number of signatures exceeded the 5,376 signatures needed to put the issue on the ballot, so the recommended action is to request an ordinance to put this on the ballot.
Okay, let me, council, just to point out, we, by state statute, are required to put this to the voters as an election, we are required by state statute not to have a position for or against, to spend money to support a campaign, et cetera, Mr. Finley sent us all a document this week, making sure we fully understood, so, this is strictly in accordance with state statute, that citizens of Longview have signed this petition, it's been authorized, everything's-
It's verified.
Verified.
They have the number of signatures.
So, at this point, I'll ask for a motion to consider the ordinance.
Move to consider.
Have a motion?
Aye.
Second or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. B is to consider an ordinance calling a local election, you want to do that again?
That was it.
Okay, so, we got, we took care of A and B?
Uh huh.
All good, consider an ordinance, C, calling an election on May 11th, 2013, to amend the charter of the cities of Longview concerning filing fees and residence requirements, okay, my name's on that one, let me tell the citizens that, this is not something that just came up, you know, last year's election, I mean, I've been on the council long enough to where that has been, you know, considered, talked about, brought before the council on a number of occasions, and, you know, in listening to everything that Brandon said, which was very, very good, he said, one of the things he said, it is the antithesis to democracy, and that's your right to vote, and my thought process is, you know, we have people bring and require and ask of things for us, okay, we put on ballots, et cetera, and in my opinion, you know, putting this before the voters, again, we don't have a position, we can't, you know, propose, or, I mean, oppose, or be far up here at all, we're not going to, but it deserves the right of the voters, this, we live in a democracy, okay, and in democracy, the voters decide, you know, whether we do this or not, none of us, but, you know, only thing we're talking about doing is putting it to the voters, and anybody that doesn't agree, you know, doesn't want that to happen, go vote, people that want to see that happen, and think it's the right thing to do, go vote, that's not, that's not anything that we're gonna be doing, we're just, we're discussing, you know, putting it before the voters, which, again, to me, I agree with the antithesis to democracy, that's the right to vote, and we should give the voters of Longview the right to vote. Anybody have any other comments, or? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion for item C.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Aye.
Second or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
Motion passes. All right, items of community interest, Mr. Sims, I know you're gonna tell your friend Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yes, she couldn't be with us tonight, but setting home, watching on television, hi, I'll be there in a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Garrett?
Listen, man, I got an opportunity to go out to the fork truck rodeo on Tuesday.
Did you drive one?
That was definitely amazing.
Did you drive one?
It was very intriguing.
Okay.
But I didn't get an opportunity to drive a fork truck, but that's the first time I had saw it, a race, well, a time race before, I went to Austin last weekend, they gave me a certificate of achievement for, from TML, for-
You gonna show it to everybody?
It's late, it's light.
There you go, Garrett Smith.
And obtaining 60 hours of continuing education credits in six months, so-
60 hours?
60 hours, yeah.
Good job, good deal, Garrett, I gotta tell you, for a new council member, he's steady on the ball, my goodness, yep, he's doing a good job, Ms. Casha?
I'm trying to look and see what's coming up, I know that Top Ladies of Distinction, we will host our annual Hearts of Love soiree benefiting top teens of America on Saturday, February the 23rd, and tickets are, I think they're $30 this year, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm just not really sure.
If not, Ms. Casha will cover the difference, if it happens to be 35.
And we have, I know our mayor and Councilman Manley and others support us routinely, so if you want to come, just come, I need to say this, Death by Chocolate, for those who did not come, if you did not attend, which is the fundraiser sponsored by Keep Longview Beautiful, which, I'm just thrilled to have Kim Droge now, as a part of our team with the city of Longview, it was phenomenal, and we all just really had a great time, I went with the anticipation of leaving early, needless to say, I think I was there after the mayor left, so, it was really a good event, so, kudos for a great and very well-attended event, it was a pleasure to be there.
And I think the city manager-
Stole the show.
Should, well, he did, he did, he did, but I think it should be a requirement that the next meeting, he wears his wig, he said he hadn't had that much hair since he was 13, no, that's what he said, big old bushy thing, okay, Mr. Frost?
I want to echo what she said about chocolate.
You were there too, it was a great time, and we had another star here, Mr. Manley.
He played himself.
He did, yeah.
Two things, Happy Valentine's Day, my sweetie, he's out in the audience waiting for me for dinner tonight, and, you know, it's a pleasure to be part of an organization like this, or a board like this, where we can have a fairly tense conversation about an important issue, and we can disagree without being disagreeable, and I think we set a real fine example for our community, and for others, including Washington and Austin, so, I salute all of you, and it's a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you. You still thinking about that burlap sack, or what?
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a totesack.
It's a totesack, that's how I thought you were supposed to bring them, I'm glad I didn't go down there.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for my wonderful wife, that's sitting at home tonight, that's put up with me for 47 years, and with three children, eight grandchildren, I want to say thank you, but on another point, I have a question for Mr. Willard, our city manager, a question?
Yes.
Okay, would you, I'm a little, what are the hours of the city manager's office?
Whenever I need to be there, why do you ask?
What are the hours of the city manager's office, normally during the week?
Eight to five.
Eight to five, okay, and the phone number is 237-1021, is that correct, all right, it's a little bit of a problem, would it be asking too much to have someone available up to 5 o'clock to answer the telephone?
All right.
Okay, I would appreciate that, thank you, that's it.
Okay, all righty, Longview Public Library hosts a Texas Film Roundup, residents may bring materials to the Longview Public Library's Genealogy and Local Historic Department between February 17th and March 3rd, 2013, for more information, call 903-237-1350. Waterway cleanup at Rotary Park is Saturday, February 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, for more information, call 903-237-1390. March 1st, deadline for the city board commission or committee applications for 2013, if you'd like to volunteer and serve, please visit our website at www.longviewtexas.gov, click on City Government, and in Boards and Commissions, you'll find an application that you can fill out and submit online, you can also call the city manager's office, that, according to Mr. Allen, is 903-237-1021, from 8 to 5, now, if Judy happens to be making coffee, and she doesn't answer by 5, because I did pull her away from the phone this afternoon, anyway, that stuff kinda happens, but anyway, so, get an application, and I want to tell my pretty little wife, and kiddos, Happy Valentine's Day, and again, I sure appreciate y'all being here, look at these two ladies dressed in red for Valentine's Day, sitting there with Mr. John Mathis, Commissioner Mathis, tell us hello over there, John.
Hello, Jay.
All right, all right, not just me, what about the rest of the people, man, I know you're gonna say hello to Mr. Willard, there you go, okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna adjourn the executive session, item A, deliberation regarding real property under Texas Government Code, Section 551-072, consider the purchase and value of real property located in the Alexander Jordan survey, B, deliberation regarding economic development incentives under Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, to consider an offer of economic development incentives for the construction of a hotel motel, or hotel conference center, will we be coming out? Okay, then, we will adjourn to executive session, and we should be coming back out. Meeting is back in session.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 904 East Pacific Street, Longview, Texas, in the amount of $335,000, plus closing and reasonable relocation expenses, to accommodate expansion of the Longview multimodal facility.
Second. Okay, any questions? All right, so we have a motion, second or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, meeting adjourned.